This evening, we're going to hear coverage of the, what we'll call the base town budget and other related items, as well as personnel items and some smaller things. A few administrative notes, if you're looking for exits, you need to get out, don't walk into the closet over here where the stuff is going on for the Minuteman Media Network. We have an exit to my left, your right, and the one at the back of the room, this is not going to go anywhere either. So those are the fire exits, thank you. I'd like to start right away by welcoming the Finance Committee. We also have members of the Select Board in attendance, the Planning Board, we have a good crowd here, I'm welcoming everyone. I think we should just jump right in. Our first article this evening is going to be introduced by our Finance Director, Carrie LaFleur, and that is about how we're going to run town meeting this year.
Article three is a request for town meeting to adopt a rule of the meeting resolution, which we will have a handout at town meeting. This is a standard article, it's typically on the consent calendar. It was first proposed in 1992, and the purpose behind this is to make sure that any town meeting spending is within the constraints of Proposition 2 and 1/2. So the requirement of the resolution is that for cash outlays, any motion to increase any spending item above the proposed budget must specify the amount of the increase and the funding source, whether that be a decrease in proposed existing spending, a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, or use of other available funds. One note that I would like to make is with respect to borrowing authorizations, a reduction in a borrowing authorization cannot be a funding source for a cash outlay article. And then for debt authorizations, any motion to increase a borrowing item for which debt service is covered within the levy limit must also specify the amount of the increase and the source of the funding. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Finance Committee? Seeing none, I think we're, thank you Carrie. So next, we're going to collect three articles brought by the Personnel Board. If you have, an administrative note that I did not mention is that if you have questions, there's a microphone at the back of the room, and you can go to that and bring your question or comment to the floor, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ellen Quackenbush, 206 Perry Street, Chair of the Personnel Board. And as stated, I'm going to be reading or introducing you to three articles, Article four, five, and six. So Article four, and this is typically on the consent calendar, is reflected in the warrant and reads, "To determine whether the town will vote to ratify the Personnel Board's action to amend the classification and compensation plan as follows, or take any other action relative thereto." This is detailed on page one of the warrant. Two, what is the classification, what is the classification action? This article requests town meeting approval of classification actions taken by the Personnel Board during the past year. A classification action is an amendment to the town's classification and compensation plan, which adds or deletes a job title, assigns a job title to a salary range, or reassigns a title from one salary range to another within the plan. Existence of the title on the plan does not determine whether the position will be funded. Funding for positions is subject to the limitations of the approved general fund and enterprise Classification actions become necessary throughout the year when the town manager creates a new position, when duties of an existing position change in a significant manner, or when it is determined that a position title needs to be updated. In accordance with the Personnel Bylaw, the Personnel Board assigns titles and salary ranges as needed throughout the year, and puts them into immediate effect. Salary grade assignments are determined by using the town's standardized classification system, which groups positions by assigning weighted points to common occupational features and distinguishing characteristics such as, what's the nature of the work, what's the level of the work, what are the job requirements, job qualifications, and working conditions. In the event that the Personnel Board determines that a new or a changed position requires an amendment to the classification and compensation plan, the Board temporarily authorizes the change pending ratification by, at the next town meeting. Since 2019, 2019 town meeting, the Personnel Board authorized three changes to the classification plan, and they're printed in the warrant, and they're subject to town meeting ratification. Two actions were title changes, with no impact on grade and salary range assignments. The title's facility land maintainer and chief financial officer were recommended as being a better fit with current responsibilities of the positions. The third action added a title to the plan. Due to increased responsibility and complexity in an existing position, was reassigned from a lower salary grade in the AC4 grade with a new title of Assistant to the Town Clerk. These actions, as intended by the Personnel Bylaw, maintain appropriate job titles and salary ranges in order to attract and retain high-quality competent employees, comply with pay equity laws, and prolong the life of the classification and compensation plan. This is important because it costs a lot of money and time to redo this plan, and we're trying very hard, the HR manager and the Personnel Board, to prolong that plan by making changes as we go along. Accordingly, they're presented, so we present these tweaks, you might say, to the classification plan, or classification plan for town meeting for ratification. That's the end of this article. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Dean, no, go ahead.
Excellent, so. Did this just come up? No, I don't know how to put it in full screen mode. Oops. Okay, I'll just start talking, I'm sure you'll be okay to follow along. So Article five is changes to the classification and compensation plans for regular status positions. Article five, as reflected in the warrant, reads, "To determine whether the town will vote to amend the classification and compensation plan for regular status town positions by adopting the following schedule to become effective July 1, 2020, or take any other actions thereto." Look at the warrant to see the proposed schedules, they're long, and they're usually in the consent calendar. The purpose of this article is to amend, in accordance to the Personnel Bylaw, the classification and compensation plan for non-union, for non-union regular status town employees, again, effective in July. It's interesting to note, or rather important to note, that this, the Personnel Bylaw affects 60% of the town's regular workforce, and less than 15% if you include the total workforce where school and non-regular employees are included. What is not covered by Article five is how much money will be allocated to employee salaries and salary increases in FY 2021. Actual salary increases are set by the town manager and the Personnel Board after town meeting, within the limits of the approved general fund and enterprise fund budgets. Article five only approves job titles, grouping of positions into grades, and salary ranges. Adoption of the warrant would incorporate the classifications set forth in Article four, increase all salary ranges, midpoints, and maximums by 2.5%, except SF, which is swim fitness, and HS, which is health, human services, where there's no increase to the maximum. And there are increases to the minimum of swim fitness 1, and health sciences A, to meet Massachusetts Minimum Wage Law. The town manager and Human Resource Director recommended these amendments to the plan based on current and anticipated workforce needs, the need to continually review compensation provided by similar municipalities, light plants, fitness facilities, and other employees with comparable positions to those in Concord, and a continuing review of pay equity for comparable positions. The town meeting, as previously mentioned, the town meeting on Article five affects salary ranges but does not control the amount of the actual salary to be received by any particular employee. So it is not a direct cost, there's not a direct cost associated with the adoption of this plan. Actual salary increases are set by the town manager and Personnel Board after budgets are established in town meeting. Therefore, if Article five is approved by town meeting, but funding for salary increases is not available in the approved budget, the salary range limits will increase, while each individual employee's actual pay will not. Likewise, if Article five is not approved by town meeting, employees may still receive salary increases within the expected range limits without increasing them, provided the funds are available. So in conclusion, the Personnel Board recommends that a fair and competitive plan is important factor for, actually, that's our reason. No, we are hoping that there's an understanding that passing this article will establish a fair and competitive plan that is very, very important for both attracting and retaining the employees that the town of Concord expects. Questions? Comments?
Any questions from the Committee?
Bill.
Just one question, and that is, you said it, this is comparable to similar municipalities? How does the range, I mean, where are we on that grid?
Amy, if you could clarify this, but I think we tried to get 80%, is that correct? Amy looks at comparable towns and surveys them, as well as has data from the Massachusetts Municipal Association for HR.
Hi, Amy, well, you have the resources for us here. So, yes, our general target, that would be reestablish ranges or adjust them, is to be in about the 85th percentile for our benchmark positions. There are some positions that are more than that, there are some that are less than that because we have to create ranges that work for all of those, and we have to work within the Equal Pay Act laws, which mean that even if the market is different for one position than another, if they're considered comparable under the law, we have to have a pay plan that's equitable and similar. So there's a lot to consider in there. I can't give you one number at all, it's not right to say that every position is at a certain percentile, but we have benchmarks and guides that we use.
Yes, Dean?
Just one quick question.
You're speaking to the microphone, Dean.
Oh, I'm sorry, of all the categories that you have, can you tell us, what are the top three that have the highest percent changes in, say, the last five years?
That's a good question.
Percent increases, I should say, in the last five years.
Let's see, if I think back, the last five years, most years, we have had a consistent increase for the majority of plans. Last year, we did quite a large number of adjustments after looking at those, I'm just, sorry, I think bigger adjustments were made in the telecommunications ranges, some of the, some of the line crews at the light plant, those types of positions, in order to make them more competitive, we had to adjust the ranges more than we did for other positions.
Concord's unusual, and just keep in mind that we have many offerings and businesses that towns don't have typically, like the light plant, like the broadband, like the BD Center, so that we are, specifically for IT and municipal light plant, municipal light plant, we're competing with other municipal light plants, and in some cases, the private sector, but for IT, it's definitely the private sector, so that's an unusual position for municipality to be in.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the comments. So now, oops, I think I'm IT challenged.
He's going to take care of it right here.
What?
He's taking care of it.
Oh, excellent. So Article six is the one that probably might provide some discussion. What we are, what Article six is reflected in the warrant reads, "To determine whether the town will vote to strike the text of the Personnel Bylaw in its entirety and replace it with the following, or any other actions relative thereto." Should I read it, or can you guys look through it?
This is pretty significant, I think it would, at least the gist of what it is we're doing here, this is pretty important.
I'll read it, it's easier to read it because it is a significant, well, it is a major change from what we have done in the past. I think it's continuous what we've done in the past, continuity, but it's different. "The town manager shall be entrusted with the administration of the town's personnel system. The town manager shall adopt and may amend rules and regulations established, to establish a lawful, equitable, and efficient system of personnel administration for town employees. The personnel system shall make use of modern concepts of personnel management, and shall include but not be limited to the following elements: personnel policies indicating the rights, obligations, and benefits of employees; a classification system," that was Article four, "a compensation system, Article five; a method for employing, for appointing employees based on merit principles; record-keeping systems, and other elements that are deemed necessary. All town agencies and positions shall be subject to the rules and regulations adopted under this section, except elected officials, employees of the school department, and as otherwise provided under Chapter 150E of the general laws. Furthermore, all compensation and benefits programs shall not exceed the limits established by appropriation. The Personnel Board shall be composed of three members, appointed by the Select Board for three years. Currently, it's five members, appointed by the Select Board for three years. The Personnel Board, at the request of the town manager, advises, shall, at the request of the town manager, advise the town manager regarding his obligations under this bylaw, should be his or her, but that advisory role is a current role of the Personnel Board, so that's just continuing the advisory role. What's changing is the centralization to the town manager and the HR department, from the Personnel Board and town meeting, the administration of the classification, compensation, and paid and unpaid benefits. So far, so good, any questions on sort of the gist of that? Okay. So on the detail. The goal of the article, the goal of the article is to support a personnel system that is efficient. And in terms of my experience being on the Personnel Board, this means optimizing the time of four different entities, the Personnel Board, town meeting, Human Resources Department, and the town manager. To be responsive to the changing operational needs, employment law, Amy was describing pay equity and workforce trends, being, to be effective for the recruitment and retention of high-quality employees, think in terms of the changing demands that our town has and the changing departments we've established, and being consistent with a strong town manager form of government. So what is the Personnel Bylaw? The bylaw defines wage and salary classification programs for non-union town staff. It addresses details such as job title, wages, salary ranges, and paid and unpaid leave. It doesn't apply to school and unionized employees, so bottom line, it applies to a quarter overall of town and Concord Public School System, the regular workforce. Town manager and Personnel Board have administrative authority for this bylaw, note that it's wage and classification, job titles, wage, and paid leave, and with all changes voted on by town meeting. Historically, as we all know, these have been in the consent calendar. So let me explain, worth to step back and explain some of the challenges of the current personnel administrative system as it stands. If there is a need, for example, of a mid-year change to the classification or compensation plan, which is one section of the Personnel Bylaw, here's the process. One, the town manager, consistent with his or her authority, decides to modify the duties of a position. Two, the HR director evaluates the duties in light of internal equity, you know, we want to be sure across departments, people feel like they're being paid fairly. Market factors, that means, are you competing with other municipal departments, other municipal light plants, or public? The relevant laws, and recommends a job title and salary range. Three, the Personnel Board reviews their recommendation, and upon a board approval, the change takes effect. Four, as much as a year later, or at least many, many months later, often, town meeting votes to determine whether the implemented act should be made official. It's an inefficient process that leaves the employee and management often in an uncertain position for quite a period of time. The same would be if you wanted to, for example, change paid leave rules and regulations. If a new position is created, and there needs to be a competitive pay package, for example, that maybe requires modification to non-union paid leave benefits or other attributes, it could take quite a few, quite a few months to get town meeting approval to offer such a benefit. We have heard situations in which we have not been able to make a timely offer to someone because Personnel Board didn't meet, or because it had to be approved by town meeting, and other administrative problems. In other words, it's a sequential process, and it's a four-step sequential process. And we think that, or, the Personnel Board believes that changes in Article six would improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the administration of the personnel system. The proposed, what's the concept of the proposed bylaw? It doesn't define all the details, it defines elements rather than those details, so it would require a lawful and equitable, efficient system of personnel administration, please pay attention to the word "administration," it's administration of the elements of the Personnel Bylaw, personnel policies about rights, obligations, and benefits, a job classification system, a compensation plan, and a method for appointing employees, as I had mentioned before, based on merit, and a record-keeping system. We think that the, or the Personnel Board believes that the impact of article, of this change would be to centralize, or we say that the impact of this article would be, centralized employment compensation decisions to the town manager, so to have the authority for all town employees. Eliminate the need to bring these issues to the Personnel Board sequentially, to the Personnel Board, and subsequently, town meeting. Reduce the Personnel Board from five to three members, appointed, as currently, appointed by the Select Board for three-year terms, and as current, retain the Personnel Board in an advisory role. So great, what's the future role of the Personnel Board? What might the Personnel Board do in the future? As I said, if the town manager requests, the Personnel Board can advise, or may advise the town manager on some key HR issues. Some of the ones that we have discussed in the Personnel Board include workforce employment trends, and what I mean is, what do millennials, rather than, you know, folks my age, want in a, what do they want, and why do they want a job in Concord, in Concord Town Government? What are the non-compensation components of employment that Concord might offer? For example, flex time, because who likes to wait in Concord in traffic in the center of town? Work from home, if you have to accommodate child or elder parent care. On-the-job learning or special assignments to further an employee's career potential. This is something that we think maybe in addition to salary is important to people. Concord citizens have, as we know, high expectation of town employees. How does this change the type of employee that we want to attract? They have to have great people and communication skills. And retention strategies for key positions. We can't afford to have departments be down, many, many employees, if it's a critical service for the town. How do we up our game? And I think that's really what this is about. So why now? It's that Concord's been a leader in offering really innovative services. The light plant, I mean, I'm always bragging to my friends how we have our own light plant, and it has carbon-neutral goals, and so when we talk about green anything, Concord has a way that many other towns don't have to be green. The broadband service, which is like awesome, you know, effective, high-speed broadband, I love it. The BD Center. Citizens like these services, but as we increase the services, they're accepting, expecting high levels of service from the staff in those departments. Employment laws, as Amy was always telling me, are changing increasingly and rapidly, keeping track of those, being sure that the employment for town, that the, that there is, we are complying with regulations, changing regulations for town employees. Our HR systems have to be creative, responsive, competitive, and when I say, you know, state laws, that includes both union and non-union often, so that there's a reason to centralize this responsibility, because the Personnel Board only deals with non-union. Concord's form of government also has changed. It used to be that we had administrator with an HR department, with a Personnel Board that really administered the HR function. Now we have a strong town manager with a centralized and professional HR department. So, bottom line, the Personnel Board met and unanimously recommended the change in the Personnel Bylaw. So this is a, this is unusual for the Personnel Board to be, you know, changing something so large, so I would recommend, you know, first ask, what does the Finance Committee, questions have, that you all in the Finance Committee have?
Hi, is this the way other towns do it, the way you're proposing it, or were we an outlier?
We were an outlier in, well, we were an innovator in having a Personnel Board initially. And then, as other towns, when we did a survey, and actually Susan Bates, well, before I was in the Personnel Board, Susan Bates did a survey, or the Personnel Board did a survey of other towns, and found that typically, with a strong manager form of government, there wasn't Personnel Board, or if it was, it didn't have extensive responsibilities. The Personnel Boards that write job descriptions, that establish salary ranges, that maybe have a point system, is typically associated with an administrative form of government.
Thank you.
Bill?
So this will simplify town meeting?
You know, you'll save paper.
It's going to save paper, four or five pages in the warrant.
For example, we wouldn't have an Article five.
No.
I'm all for it.
So I have, I do have a question about that. So this will not come before the town, what would be, in other words, the Articles four and five that we're going to have this year?
In the future.
Will not come before the town in the future. What would be a process by which modifications to this system are reported out so that the community can be aware of what they are?
I do believe, and Amy can correct me on this, that all these, all the information's available on the website, the HR website, it is an issue about whether people look at it now and how they might look at it. It has not been defined, and you know, that's an issue, about if there needs to be proactive communication, more proactive communication. I wouldn't say the Personnel Board has many attendees that monitor what is being recommended, so I'm not, you know, it might, I'm not sure, well, I guess I don't have an answer about what, besides that it was already on the website, and maybe that there's a communication through, I don't know, the Communications Director that needs to happen. Not that the Personnel Board has always had attendees that won't have that option, but it might be just a good proactive thing to do.
I think the goal here is to be a little more, be a little bit more nimble, and that's good, but if we're creating new positions or changing salary ranges on an administrative basis, it might be helpful to have some way to, like a tickler that somehow could be looked at, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Right now, it's only a once-a-year affair.
Yeah, and that's the problem, it's not, you know, after the fact, you see it, but if you really think that that, I don't know, people would get, you know, they might say, I do or don't, you know, there should be a position that does blank.
Right.
You know, there isn't currently a process for doing that, and the Personnel Board, again, is a recipient of what the town manager and HR director recommends.
But because of the rather, you know, deliberative process that ends up with this four-stage approach, it doesn't happen often, it is recorded, it is, you know?
Yes.
There's a framework for it, whereas now, it's going to be a lot more fluid, I believe, and maybe we need to come up with some way that that, and not that it's constrained, but that it's obvious when changes are made.
Yeah, and I think that that would, you know, that's an obvious thing that could be incorporated into, through the town manager's responsibility in terms of communicating that, and perhaps finding a way in which to make it, transparency is clearly important, I guess I'd say that. Amy?
Can I just make a comment on that? You might find it helpful to think about what's printed every year in the budget book, because they are, the town manager has to work within the appropriation. Any year, there might be some changes as we go, but they still have to work within the appropriation, and in the budget book, there is a listing of intended positions, how many in each department, or charts, so that would be available each year, I would assume.
Thank you.
I have, oh, go ahead.
You have priority.
Oh, good, I have a question. On your sixth slide, which was a list of the responsibilities that the Personnel Board would continue to assume, one of them was that you would collect feedback, or citizens' expectations of town employees.
Oh, that is a possible, I mean, we were brainstorming, what do we think we should be doing?
Okay.
And it's, you know, try to understand what citizens want. It could be, for example, what, what new positions or what new activities do we wish that the town would undertake, and try to think about where that would come, and, you know, who currently does it, and, you know, job descriptions, although I'm not, we do want, I think the Personnel Board would very much like to understand how to provide a productive, a productive and, you know, rewarding experience for productive, a productive and, you know, rewarding experience for town employees, because it is a whole lot easier to retain someone than to hire them. And as new, millennials are, I mean, I don't know about you, but I've worked with a lot of millennials, and, you know, they'll stay for three to five years. How do we make that different?
Yeah, I was, I was king in on the citizens' expectations.
Yeah, so this is a possible role.
So you're not doing that now?
No, it's may advise. Some ideas are, bullet, bullet, bullet. These are our ideas. They're not part of the article at all.
Okay.
Leslie Coplo, 118 Prescott-
Can you go to the mic so it's gonna be recorded, please?
Leslie Coplo, 118 Prescott Road, Concord, Mass, former town employee.
Oh, okay, great, awesome.
So I have a couple of questions. One, when I was reading through the warrant and I came to this amendment, I was startled, and one of the first things I did was to go onto the website so that I could learn a little bit more about the Personnel Board and look at the past minutes, and-
You are, I know what you're gonna say, yeah. We, it, I agree, and-
There were no minutes since 2016.
That is correct.
And now you're talking about reducing this from five members to three, and taking away some of the responsibility. So I was curious about the explanation for that, because really, I didn't have much to look at to understand how does the Personnel Board function. And then there's been talk about retention and attrition. In my role in IT, I do see a lot of turnover, because I onboard and offboard people, or I did. From January of this past year to October, there were 51 people who left and 51 people who joined. So I'd be very interested in hearing how attrition is being addressed. This is not about getting millennials on board, this is about just retaining the people that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess I would say two things. One, that's, I think, in interest of everyone on the Personnel Board, but our responsibility is the execution and administration of the personnel bylaw, which doesn't explicitly talk about retention, except to be sure that job titles are created that reflect the person's responsibility, that there be career ladders, or, for example, have, you know, if there was a manager, and then, if there was a manager and then a worker, that there be job in between that provide a step for someone to provide a progression. Salaries that are competitive. Right now, we do not address what you might say are like broader pictures of what is the workforce, what is the workforce trend, what will the workforce look like in 2030, and what are smart retention strategies? It's a good, it's a great question. What I'm trying to say is, Personnel Board right now is really focused on efficiency and effectiveness in administration, and that's what the bylaw says. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Howell, and I live at 668 Nurse Nak Hill Road. Also, until January of this year, I was Chief Information Officer for the Town of Concord, but I'm no longer employed by the town. As the IT Department Head, I have responsibility for recruiting both IT and broadband staff, and I've appeared before the Personnel Board on a number of occasions in that capacity. With that background, I'd offer the following comments and suggestions. Article 66 would in fact completely replace the personnel bylaw. And while I agree that the bylaw does need attention, I do not agree that this is the approach we should take at this time. I don't think it's ready. The town services upon which we all depend are delivered through a combination of three elements: financial resources, processes and procedures, and, which are the purview of the administration, and the workforce or staff. And a workforce strategy is a way to pay attention to the current and future workforce needs. It helps organizations address long-term trends and meet goals. Many organizations recognize that a workforce strategy is a critical element to success. The Town of Concord has a long tradition of citizen engagement in strategic efforts. A recent example in Concord would be the way in which the Energy Futures Task Force informed the town's approach to sustainability. In my view, such an effort is needed now in the areas of talent and personnel. Changes to the workforce, the technology we use, the demographics of the town, and the services that we're trying to provide, all point to a need for a more strategic approach to the workforce and the issues of employee recruiting and retention. It's very important to address these issues. It is the Personnel Board which should, on behalf of the Select Board and the citizens, study and propose goals in the areas that are consistent with the community's values, the administration's needs, and employee concerns. The functions of the Personnel Board are controlled by three documents: the Town Charter, which simply requires that the Board be appointed by the Select Board, the Personnel Bylaw, which we're discussing here, and the Personnel Board Charge, which comes from the Select Board. Ideally, these documents would outline the town's approach to personnel governance and workforce strategy, but they do not. The Town Charter requires there be a Personnel Board, but makes no mention of the Board's functions or duties. It's my understanding that the Select Board has not updated the Personnel Board Charge since 1985. That charge is largely administrative and repeats much of what is in the bylaw. The Town Governance Study Committee in its 2014 report recommended that the changes, charges to all committees be updated every five years or so. Clearly, there's not been enough attention paid to the Personnel Board function, and that should be addressed. The current bylaw runs 14 pages, and it is quite administrative in nature. Although the bylaw as it stands is insufficient, it's important to know that it does define many of the Terms of Employments controlling the working conditions for town employees who are not part of collective bargaining agreements. Removing all these elements from the bylaw, you heard the whole thing read a few minutes ago, without being specific about what replaces them and communicating what processes will be used to maintain those conditions in the future, could create concerns and uncertainty among this critically important part of our town's professional workforce. The bylaw replacement as proposed in Article Six with just four short elements doesn't address the larger issues I have outlined. It simply delegates personnel administration to the town manager, decreases the size of the Board from five members to three members, and the Personnel Board's only responsibility is to advise the town managers only when the town manager requests it. I believe this proposed replacement would be destabilizing and counterproductive, because so little is known about the goals and virtually nothing about the implementation plan. To my knowledge, there's been no substantive discussion at the Select Board or publicized hearings on replacing the Personnel Bylaw by any Board, and, as noted a little earlier, published minutes of the discussion of the Personnel Board leading up to this proposal does not exist. Because of these many concerns, I believe that the article should not be moved at town meeting. Instead, I suggest that the Select Board fill the open position on the Personnel Board, and then charge the Board with studying and reporting on this matter, with a goal of proposing a new permanent charge and an appropriate bylaw replacement that reflects the town's values and goals for workforce strategy. The strategy should place an emphasis on the importance of attracting and retaining the workforce we need. The implementation plan for the new bylaw should make it clear how the elements of the current bylaw and associated policies which impact non-union employees will be replaced and maintained once they are no longer part of the bylaw. Employees depend on these elements of the bylaw and associated policies in important ways. The committee will send an important signal about how it evaluates employees by being deliberate and thorough in this effort. I'd like to thank the Personnel Board for bringing this to the town's attention. I am sure that with some citizen involvement and appropriate strategy for personnel governance can be developed. I urge you to take the time to get this right. Please consider working on this more before bringing it to town meeting. Thank you.
I need to technically, 260 Virginian Road. Could you go back to Slide Three, please? I have a question on that. In the middle, it indicates that the Personnel Bylaw does not apply to school and unionized employees. And yet, the next line said it applies to a quarter of the town and CPS regular workforce. Neither of those is incorrect, but I think it's deceiving. That sub-line, it really, since it doesn't apply to school employees, it's sort of irrelevant. It applies to somewhere between a third and a half, and Amy might have a better handle on the actual numbers of town employees. And that is really where Concord is an anomaly, that so much of its workforce is non-unionized. And that leads me to a question. One key element of the Personnel Bylaw, of the Personnel Board, was to serve as a grievance officer for the non-unionized employees. And how, how do you propose that that would be handled?
It's, first of all, you're right, that it's about 60% of town employees is not unionized, which is extremely unusual for any towns, and so that's-
Which is why we have a Personnel Board, traditionally.
Yeah, and, and, well, yes. And I think it might be as much historic, but it is true, you know, fact, Concord has a very low unionization, unionized rate. And one of the questions is, what is the reason for that, and how can we preserve that? Or how can we, more importantly, preserve the quality and reduce the churn of people we want to keep? I'm sorry, but other question was?
The other question was, one role of the Personnel Board was the grievance officer-
Yeah, so the grievance process is actually-
If I could just clarify, if an employee is not pleased with an administrative action by-
Right.
-the town manager or the HR department, they went to the Personnel Board. So how would that be handled?
It's still the same. There is a Policy and Procedure Number 25, and also the charge that the Select Board gave to the Personnel Board includes a grievance process. I think it's been used, I've never been on the Personnel Board when it's been used, but it's been used at least maybe once in the last long period of time, for a union, non-unionized employee. But that is still in Policy and Procedure Number 25. And it's also in the charge from 1985 from the Select Board to the Personnel Board.
However, under the proposed new bylaw, you would only be serving in an advisory capacity through the town manager.
I don't think that changes. I mean, I guess I'd-
So I guess I would ask that somehow the, the role of, as a grievance officer for the 60% of the town employees who are non-unionized, somewhere that that-
Yeah.
Be clarified. Where do the employees go if they're not happy with an action that is-
Amy, does the policies and procedures, like that Number 25, remain in effect if the Personnel Bylaw is replaced? I thought it did. Maybe I'm wrong.
So there is an existing policy that has been adopted by the Personnel Board and Town Manager jointly. There are pieces of the policy that are under the Town Manager's authority, pieces that are under the Personnel Board's authority. So the current appeal process allows an employee to bring two types of things forward for appeal, first through a supervisor, then through the department head, then to the Town Manager, then Personnel Board for advisory opinion, and then back to the Town Manager for a final decision on all matters. Those two types of matters are, one, if, if an employee is, does not believe with a disciplinary action, a termination, or something like that, that is fully the Town Manager's authority. There's nothing in the Personnel Bylaw right now that gives the Personnel Board that authority. It's a policy that has been established, or a process that's been established by the Town Manager through policy. So a change in the Personnel Bylaw wouldn't impact that, and the Town Manager could choose in the future to remove the Personnel Board from that or not. Then, the other type of action, and I should say also, the, the Town Manager is the appointing authority in accordance with the Town Charter, and that is in the Charter. It says that the Town Manager shall appoint for merit and fitness alone and may remove for cause, which is a standard that's different than, you know, the private sector, where you, or just in Massachusetts, where employees are employees that will. The Charter provides cause protection, which is a whole other legal discussion that we could get into. But the part about appeals, the second thing that an employee could appeal is if they don't agree with an application or interpretation of the Personnel Bylaw, the terms of the vacation or the sick leave, or all the various things that are covered in there. I don't think in my 30 years there's been such an appeal, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be. That, to date, has been, again, something that goes to the Personnel Board as an advisory opinion, and then the Personnel Board advises to the Town Manager who makes the final decisions. So, you know, whether or not the bylaw changes through Article Six, my understanding is that that policy could be changed.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you. By the way, on behalf of the Personnel Board, thank you very much for the comments. It's really important, yes. Thank you.
So next up, we have Article Seven, Peter Fulton. He'll be talking to us about a change in the COLA for the retirement.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name's Peter Fulton, 31 Winthrop Street in West Concord. I've been a member of the Retirement Board, introducing Article Seven here, by the way. I've been a member of the Retirement Board about 22 years, going into my eighth three-year term, and was 34 years on the fire department. What we're trying to do here is to adjust the base amount of money that an individual is eligible to receive their COLA, cost of living adjustment. Currently sits at $12,000 per year, and we propose to increase it, the base, to $14,000 per year. This is a, perhaps a small benefit for the individual, but it is a benefit, and we'd like to pursue it. We're one of 104 systems in the state. We're doing pretty well fiduciarily. We're in the top five to 10 of that 104 systems as far as performance, and we're 86% funded. I'm somewhat of a novice at introducing these articles, so bear with me here. And I'm trying to get my presentation down to my five minutes, so I don't get the wrath of the moderator. This is a comparison bar chart, where we stand today in the orange column and where we'd like to be in the proposed column. Pretty straightforward there. We're, this $14,000 column represents about 20, 25% of the systems statewide. There's one thing I have to correct here. As I said, I'm a novice at the introduction of these articles, and I just got, pardon me, an actuarial figure on this, and this $309,000 figure on this slide should read $350,000, so my apologies. This is the cost that would be added to the appropriation of the town, and that's over an 11-year period, because that's our funded scheduled target to be fully funded by 2030. And this is also, the correct figure there is $48, so the property tax impact for any household would be approximately, well, would in fact be $48. This is why we, one of the reasons, or one of the few, many reasons that we're introducing this, the last increase was over 20 years ago. And something a lot of folks aren't aware of here is that public employee retirees or municipal retirees are not eligible for, pardon me, they, they are somewhat eligible for Social Security, but it's subject to a WEP provision, Windfall Elimination Provision. So consequently, they don't receive all of their Social Security. So a lot of folks do retire, pardon me, do rely primarily on their pensions. And there's another bulleted item here, or fourth, pardon me, third item, talking about how individuals contribute over 9%, 9% of their salary now, so it is pretty expensive. And we'd like to suggest that competitive pensions attract the best municipal employees. Okay, I also have my administrator here with me. I do have additional slides, but in the interest of trying to expedite my presentation here and get to my five-minute timeframe, questions or comments, please? You're on.
Thank you for that. The other night, when you were at the Finance Committee, some of the additional information we discussed was perhaps a census to what cost of living increase those other towns on your Slide Three pay on their sometimes higher-
I apologize, I did not get that information for you.
My point is, is that other towns could be paying a lower than 3% cost of living adjustment on a higher base, and so resulting in less, actually, less money to the recipients.
Right. Yeah. All right. Well, I'll work, my administrator would be more than happy to field that question.
Good evening. Lynda Boucher, the Retirement Board Administrator. I've been with the town of Concord for about 13 years now, very happy to be here. We do get a, we have an oversight agency known as the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission. We get a memo from them once a year that sets forth the cost of living increase according to the Consumer Price Index, which is how Social Security increases their benefits. The retirement boards in Massachusetts are guided to use the Consumer Price Index, but we can go up to 3%. So that is a variable that they leave for each system, and of course, that will depend on the system's funded status. Right now, in Concord, we have had a 3% cost of living increase built into our funding schedule. I'm not certain how long it's been there, but we have issued the 3% since I started here 13 years ago on the $12,000. We haven't wavered. There's been many times that the CPI is slightly less than ours, but it's on the full Social Security benefit, whereas ours is on $12,000. So it's very manageable when you know that it's going to be $360 every year, that's it.
I see. Thank you. That's great information. That was actually, part of my question was, the Social Security increase for this year, I think, is 1.6%, but your point is it's on a much higher, higher base level. Is that, is that correct?
Exactly. But if you take the 1.6 on somebody's $24,000 Social Security benefit, they are getting more than our retirees are getting. We also, although our average pension in Concord is $28,000, we still have many members, many retirees of the system that aren't anywhere near that. So a $40 increase in their monthly benefit means a lot to them. For those that are over $20,000, $28,000 a year, you know, most of them are like, well, it doesn't, it's not going to make or break my, my lifestyle, but as fiduciaries of the system, the board is required to make sure that the retiree benefits are staying consistent and comparable to those in Social Security. Whereas Pete said earlier, many of our public retirees have a reduced Social Security benefit, and it could be as low as 40% compared to what they had anticipated getting through their career. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Just a clarification, you said the 309 should go to 350, the 309,000 should go to 350,000. There was also another number, 48 per household in Concord?
Yes.
Did you say that number is correct or incorrect? Sorry.
It is correct. I'm sorry, yeah.
Forty, the-
The $48-
Forty eight, the $48 per household is a correct number?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the $350,000 is built into the current funding schedule. So right now, we have a funding schedule that has the $12,000 a year. That is also incorporated into the unfunded liabilities. So in order for us to complete our funding schedule as we had anticipated by 2030, we're rushing that extra benefit, the enhanced benefit, to get it all solid and finished by 2030. Then going forward, that figure should drop down to about $85,000 a year to fund the $14,000 COLA for current retirees and future retirees.
Thank you, folks. I'd encourage the endorsement, and thank you.
Next up, we have Article VIII, which is a very regular article. We bring this article. The Finance Committee recommends the use of free cash every year, and I'm going to ask our Finance Director to introduce the article. Thank you.
So as the Chair of the Finance Committee mentioned, this is an article that we see at town meeting on an annual basis. Sometimes it appears on the consent calendar, and sometimes it is up for a full presentation at the meeting. The amount, again, this year is $1 million that we're seeking to have town meeting approval to reduce the, the tax rate for fiscal '21. Free cash is the town's undesignated fund balance. It is generated when actual revenue collections exceed estimates and/or when actual expenditures are less than appropriations. Free cash is certified each year by the Department of Revenue. It is available for appropriation after certification at any regular or special town meeting. This chart shows the amount of free cash certified for the most recent 10-year period. The town has adopted a fin, oops, what happened? The town has adopted a financial policy which states that free cash should be maintained at a level of 5% to 10% of the general fund budget, that it should be used to provide property tax relief, and that it should only be used to the extent that it can be replenished in the following year. If it does rise above 10%, as it has in each year of this 10-year period, the town shall consider using the excess for a capital item or to deposit into a general stabilization fund, a general fund stabilization fund. So this is the, the free cash calculation. The town's certified free cash as of June 30, 2019 is $11,839,956, or 10.08% of the next year's budget. This amount is $91,217 above the policy maximum. However, once you subtract the $1 million that is sought under this particular article, we're well within the policy limits. This slide also itemizes other requests for free cash appropriation included on the 2020 Annual Town Meeting warrant, but those aren't up for discussion this evening. But I'm certainly happy to answer questions about that. And happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Hi, Carrie Markhelligan. Do we currently have a general fund stabilization fund? And if so, what's the balance?
We do have a general fund stabilization fund. It has a very small balance. It's less than $10,000.
Thank you.
John?
Could I, could you just remind me, how long has this amount been at $1 million to reduce the, the tax levy?
Oh, you know, off the top of my head, I don't know, but it, it has been standard practice for a good number of years. I would say more than 10 years.
More than 10 years?
Yes.
Because as the median household tax bill compounds at close to 4%, $1 million, of course, is a reduction in, in the impact, if it's stable at that level. That's the point of my question.
Carrie, can we pause for a minute on the slide you showed that starts with, right now, we're at 10%?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then you've done us, you've looked forward and said, if, if all of the articles this year, at this town meeting, that are seeking money from free cash were approved, we would go down to, I can't read that number.
So it would be $8,139,956, or 6.93%.
I get it. So we're at 10, and we would go down to a little bit more, a little bit less than seven?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dee?
Just a point of clarification on page-
Are you speaking to a microphone, Dee?
Nope. On page 18 of the town manager's budget, it does say that the $1 million started with fiscal year 2017.
No, no.
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 That's not it? To reduce it to, page 18?
Of what?
Of this book.
Budget book?
Of the budget book. Says appropriated to reduce the tax levy. Is that the topic we're talking about, correct?
Yep.
Yep. And it says that in, for fiscal year 2017, it was $1 million, and has been $1 million since then.
Oh, at the, at the $1 million level. Yes. So in, in that column, that, that is a good point, because that's different than what I said. So if anybody has the budget book, page 18, there is a column that says appropriated to reduce the tax levy, and it goes back to 2006. And it was, it was at, started at half a million, and has increased over time to $1 million. Yeah. Thank you, Dee.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie. So next up, so the next article is actually a backward-looking article, Article IX. It will be presented by the town manager, and it's about a budget adjustment for the FY '20 budget year.
My name is Stephen Crane. I'm the town manager, and I'm presenting Article IX, which is a budget adjustment. The purpose of the budget adjustment is to transfer $225,000 from the FY '20 Reserve Fund to the line item for legal services. And to get started, I just wanted to look at, or to show you all a, a quick history of the reserve fund expenditures in a way that is completely unreadable. I want to do a five-year look back. The point of the slide is to show you that, the point of it, but in FY '15, even I have my glasses on. In FY '15, out of a $225,000 budget, $215,000 went unspent and was returned to Treasury. In FY '16, that number was $188,500. In FY '17, there, as you can see, there was a number of expenditures, and $55,882 was returned to Treasury. In FY, in FY fiscal years 18 and 19, all $225,000 were spent, mostly for unforeseen legal expenses related to mostly Esterbrook Road, but also collective bargaining. So over the last couple of years, the use of the reserve fund has really been driven in part by litigation. So this is from the Finance Committee's webpage, and this says that amongst the other duties, the Finance Committee manages the town's appropriated reserve fund, voting to disperse money from this fund upon the request from the town manager when unforeseen or extraordinary circumstances occur. The reserve fund request, I did make such a request on January 23rd for $225,000. The Finance Committee did not find the circumstances to be unforeseen or extraordinary and denied the request. So because the reserve fund is basically some, an appropriation from the appropriating body, town meeting, to the Finance Committee, the statute, I think, state statute imposes some criteria for the, for the finance to consider in expending those funds. Because town meeting is the appropriating body, this transfer does not rely on unforeseen or extraordinary, it's just a simple line item transfer made by the appropriating body. So a little bit of information about the legal services budget, the FY '20 current budget is $250,000. Our legal services budget covers town council general matters, labor council general matters, and litigation. But for the last few years, the historic expenditure trend has been under $250,000. That amount has usually been adequate to fund it, again, but for the last few years in litigation. So in light of the expenditure trends, I have, I have proposed in the FY '21 town manager's budget to increase that line item to $344,000. And just a little summary on the cost of the Esterbrook Road litigation, there, so far, about, close to $900,000 has been spent to date. The first $100,000 was spent between 2016 and 2018 on legal analysis negotiations. Then there was $100,000 appropriated to 2018 special town meeting. At the time, the projected cost of litigation for discovery and resolution was about a quarter of a million dollars. So how did we get from there to here? There, there's been a significant additional historical research, a lot of expert work related to that, those historical records, and some unanticipated discovery costs. The Select Board has worked to reduce, to control costs of litigation by limiting the claim to the historical status of Esterbrook Road, which, which avoids additional discovery and deposition of dozens of road, of, of the road users. So that really saved a significant amount of money in, in the litigation, and proposed a case schedule to minimize discovery costs and extended multiple offers to negotiate a settlement. So looking ahead, all discovery is expected to be completed by the end of this month. We, town council has prepared an estimate for pre-trial and trial in the range of about $80,000. Again, knowing what we know today, that is the estimated range. But with a caveat that the scope of the trial is not yet known. In fact, given the trial schedule, these will likely be FY '21 costs. And if there are summary judgment motions filed, that could add an additional $50,000 in costs, which would occur in the end of FY '20. So that's the explanation. Open questions about the cost of litigation?
All right. So Philip Swain, and I'm a lawyer, so I pay attention to budgets. So it sounds like you've got a budget of $80,000 for the remaining fact discovery, no budget for trial yet, is that right?
But that, the $80,000 is both.
Oh, that includes the trial? Okay. And what's the total that we've spent so far on the Esterbrook Road?
It was about $900,000.
$900,000?
Yeah.
And could you just describe briefly the process of how you go about approving these services? Does, do the lawyers come to you in advance and ask to do this, or is it an after-the-fact bill? I will just tell you the way my clients ask, is my clients ask me to give them an estimate first, and then they approve whether I can spend $900,000. I don't give them a bill at the end of the time. So I don't know how it has been working with this litigation.
Well, to be honest with you, a lot of the money is spent before I got here, so I can't really speak to what has happened in advance of that. But I mean, council regularly updates the town, and both the town manager and the Select Board, and advises on, there are certain processes that, as an attorney, I'm sure you know, once you get engaged in, there are certain things that, there's not a lot of flexibility, and certain things that have to happen. You know, generally, if, if step one is taken, steps two, three, and four need to be taken as well, and so that's kind of what has driven the costs up.
Well, I'll just tell you that my clients go over those steps each time. I, I don't just execute them and then tell the client afterward, I have to get approval. So, I'm sorry, I have to get approval from a client before I execute steps. There's step one, then there's step two, three, and four, maybe a motion or responding to a motion, but I have to go over that with them in advance. I don't just go ahead and do it.
Well, the purpose of the article is really, it's not about legal strategy, it's, there's a line item that is depleted, and it needs a transfer to meet expenses.
I guess I'm just suggesting that there should be a procedure where the lawyers have to go to you first before they incur additional expenses and fees.
I see someone, Mike, Neil, would you like to-
Mr. Chairman, Neil Rasmussen, and I'm one of the owners of the Esterbrook Woods and a defendant in the lawsuit. I just think the town needs to go into this with eyes wide open. There's an argument, this is strictly a housekeeping function, because these are expenses that have been incurred, they're going to have to be paid. So this vote doesn't actually cost the town anything, I believe. But I would like to suggest that this is really the beginning of about a three or four million dollar expense, is what you're getting into, just like previous votes the town took, that looked small and turned out to be gigantic. The last time this issue came to town meeting, in the fall of 2018, there was an ask for $100,000, and the town was told it's only $150,000 to finish, but that's not what happened. Since then, since the town told us it was only $150,000 to finish, the town has committed about another $750,000 with a lot more coming. And the numbers you saw there to get all this through trial, that made our lawyers just fall out of their chairs laughing, because those are ridiculously low numbers, just like the other earlier projections given were ridiculously low numbers. The, the problem we have is that, so since then, the town has committed about 5X what they said they were going to have to spend to finish this. This article will be viewed as a mandate, just like the previous article was, not, from 2018, not to resolve the law- two thousand and eighteen, not to resolve the lawsuit, but to continue it. And that doesn't make a lot of sense, I think, to a lot of people. The likely follow-on expenditures will almost certainly be more than a million dollars from here on to finish this. And the closest case to this case in the history of Massachusetts is Wrexham Beach and Marshfield, which went on for eighteen years. The owners of the Esterbrook Woods will also need to spend a similar or even more than the town is spending, because there's a lot of defendants in this case. And we expect to be awarded our legal fees when we prevail in this case, which will probably be at least another two million dollars that the town will have to cough up as part of this case. So, this vote could in fact start a series of events that end up costing the town four million dollars. The second point I'd like to make is you might ask, how the heck could a case like this cost this kind of money? And in Massachusetts, these kind of situations are resolved quite simply by documents. If you have a claim on a right to property, you have a document, it's called an easement. It could be a road easement, it could be an easement, it could be a deed. And they're resolved quite simply and quickly in summary judgment. This case, if, if there were such documents, this case would have been resolved years ago. But in fact, the town hasn't been able to find any such documents, continues to come up with documents, then retract them, change their plans. And so, we've been getting the legal runaround, chasing legal rabbits for years. At enormous expense, we've produced thirteen thousand documents between the town and us in this case. There's been hundreds of hours of depositions. Almost all of that was about claims the town has already retracted in the case. So, I would just like to suggest, the, the town deserves to know what they expect to gain and what the likelihood of success is. The town should get a second opinion before the town's people take a vote that could end up costing another four million dollars. The Select Board and the NRC should also get together and think about whether this extraordinary expense would be better used to improve access on town lands rather than attempting to force access on private land.
Thank you.
Dean, can I make one other comment? And that is, I'm going to say the same thing I said to my clients when I'm faced with a situation like this. You should get together with the other side and settle this, if you can.
Go ahead.
Brooks Reed, three six six Esterbrook Road. I'd like to echo Neil's comment about how, how you get an easement. Public roads are made public by publicly available documents. If you can't just pull the documents out and show them to us, they must not exist. So, I'd actually like to roll back to, could you roll back, Mr. Crane, to the slide you had where it showed unexpected expenses? It mentioned unexpected, the list of the, how we got here.
No, sorry.
Maybe it's forward one.
Right there. Is that the final bullet?
Four, one more.
Oh, okay.
No, maybe one more forward.
That's it? It's, no, it's this one.
All the way.
Yes, this is the one?
It's, it's the one where you, you listed past year's expenses on the, on the case.
That's what we're looking at?
Try again.
Oh, prior transfers, okay.
The very first.
This one?
There you go. Yes, okay. So, it's hard to read, but fiscal year eighteen, unforeseen legal expenses, fiscal year nineteen, unforeseen legal expenses. So, the town actually started researching the issue at the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, or maybe even the end of two thousand and fifteen. So, they've been at it for half a decade. After half a decade, they're unable to produce anything they can bring to court and show to the judge, so the judge will issue the town an easement over the road. You've got to ask yourself, if half a decade hasn't done their job, what's going on? I also want to add that it says two thousand and eighteen, the legal expenses were unforeseen. The town has claimed that all through two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, the Select Board held executive sessions in which it talked about Esterbrook Road. It did not mention the word Esterbrook on the agendas. And it claimed that it was holding these executive sessions because litigation was imminent. So, I, it's unclear to me how fiscal year eighteen could have unforeseen legal expenses when the Select Board was claiming as early as two thousand and sixteen that, that legal action was imminent. So, none of this makes sense from the point of view of the defendants. I just want to bring up those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Here we go.
Thank you, Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. Stephen, I just have a question again about the amount of money. I was going to ask whether you were planning enough money, and clearly from the discussion there, that, that bears further discussion. But just from the statistics you've given, given us, an eighty thousand dollar and a fifty thousand dollar comes to, I believe, a hundred and thirty thousand. And if you add that to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was previously requested, that comes to three hundred and eighty thousand dollars rather than three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So, I just wonder where that chart fall is covered and where it happens in the budget. I may have misunderstood the, the figures, but that seemed, that's puzzling to me, at least.
So, the Town Manager's budget has, was prepared and submitted prior to getting an updated cost of litigation. So, one didn't fall the other. We, we updated the legal services budget, and then Town Council did update the expected cost to get through trial. So, let me say it this way.
So, so the, the.
The FY twenty-one Town Manager's legal services budget was not informed by the estimate.
Okay. So, you're going to increase the request before Town Meeting?
I'm not planning to. It's already, the budget's already.
I understand that, and warrants numbers cannot be, I'm just wondering.
Well, there's a lot of unknowns between now and then, so I don't know that I would increase it based on uncertainty.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen Quacken was two oh six Prairie Street. I don't know if you can, if folks can answer this, but Mr. Mash, Mash Mucen made a comment that kind of perked my ears. Are we responsible for the defendant's legal fees if we lose?
I, I'm, I'm not Town Council, so I couldn't answer that.
I guess I would just raise that, because that's a serious red flag.
Yeah.
Not usually.
I, I think.
It's unusual. There's provisions in Massachusetts procedure to seek the other side's attorney fees, but the normal procedure is each side pays their own.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's what I thought, just as curious. But again, I guess that's a legal counsel issue, and it's a risk mitigation issue.
Matt Johnson, twenty-one Winthrop Street. I just was curious, what is the effect if this article did not pass at Town Meeting?
Well, the effect would be that the Finance Committee would retain the full amount of the reserve funds, and then somewhere near the end of the fiscal year, the deficit in the, in that line, and legal service line item would need to be met through an interdepartmental transfer, meaning transferring, transferring from one general, other department, other general government function, like public safety, for example, into legal services, which will require both the Select Board and the Finance Committee at that time.
So, it would have to be taken away from the budget of some other department?
I mean, at year end, usually at year end, if there's funds that aren't, don't look like they're going to be expended in the fiscal year, they are available. It's a pretty, as I say, it's common, but it is done semi-regularly in, in communities who have situations like this, or not like this, but who have situations where line items are, are expended, and they need to bring in money from another function.
Are there examples of past cases of that occurring?
I don't know in Concord. I know in Long Meadow, we did it a few times. It's, like I said, it's not, it's not that uncommon.
So, let me comment on that, because we've been through this for several years. These, the list of transfers that you see here, some of which occur in the last ninety days of the fiscal year, the town, the town can appeal to a combination of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and with the agreement, funds can be transferred from any line item account to another line item account. This reserve fund would then be a line item account, and we are at the end of the fiscal year, and if the funds are still there, it is quite likely that they could be transferred without too much friction, because they haven't been used and they're transferable. So, you know, this is something that happens regularly. It happens every year.
And then, a question for the Finance Committee. What were the criteria that you used to determine whether the expense was unforeseen or not? I guess the committee determined that it was not unforeseen, but technically, you know, this amount was budgeted and that amount was spent. So, how did you say that that was unforeseen? What was the evidence or the?
As you can see on the slide that's being displayed, this is the third time we've, they've been back to the well for this purpose. And at the, at the fiscal nineteen request, which was approved, I think the Finance Committee was quite clear in saying, please do not come back, you know, asking for this as an unforeseen and an extraordinary expense again. So, you know, I think I speak for the committee, which voted unanimously to decline the request, that we did not take kindly to that, to that request, like, please do not come back trying to use these funds for this purpose for ongoing litigation. So.
I guess a question, then, a follow-up question, because I, as I've read, among all the different kind of categories of town expenses, that legal expenses are the hardest ones to budget, that they tend to be unforeseen by the nature of litigation and discovery tends to lead in directions that is very hard to anticipate. So, I guess I, maybe I could even put that to Mr. Swain with his background, that it...
It's, it's a terrible problem for lawyers to predict litigation, but clients ask us to do it all the time. And we have to, you know, if they give us a budget, we have to live within it. But I certainly don't go to my clients and say, well, I didn't, I, I blew through your budget, so you owe me for the additional money.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm William Becklin, two fifty-four Fairhaven Road. I don't have a dog in this fight. I live totally on the other side of town. I was at the last Finance Committee meeting where you basically turned down this request, and I'm surprised to see it show up again, because I thought that it was pretty much agreed that the place to argue this was going to be on the Town Meeting, so that the citizens of the town, taxpaying citizens of the town, could understand what we're getting for having spent a million dollars on this. I don't see it. I wish it would be in front of the town, so the town can understand why we spent a million dollars on it and what the benefit is going to be.
Just a, if I could, sir, that's why we have the article here and the warrant, so Town Meeting can vote to do this line item transfer instead of, as opposed to the Finance Committee, who declined to do it. So, I, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any further questions from the Finance Committee? Dee?
Stephen, would you please describe what happens at the end of the year if you do not have money to pay the bills, and what happens to our bond rating, et cetera, or the potential consequences from a financial standpoint?
Well, I think if you, if you don't pay your bills, then you, that definitely negatively impacts your credit. We could be subject to fees, late fees, interest charges, things like that, because we would, we would default on our, on our legal bills.
And is there any other ramification to our bond rating on that?
I mean, I would, I would defer to Carrie on that, but I, I can't really say.
Ms. Lefler?
It certainly is, it certainly, it doesn't help, especially if, especially if the town does have the resources to, to meet the obligation. Do you want?
So, I, I think the, the more immediate issue is the state will not let us close our budget with the deficit. So, I think what would happen, because this is, while we can carry a deficit for a court settlement, we can't for legal fees. So, I think that the state would require us to address this, and if the town did not address it, the likely, the likely issue that would happen, I think, is when we're going to have our free cash certified. Say the amount is two hundred thousand dollars, that we have a deficit. They would reserve two hundred thousand dollars from our deficit. They would require us then to fund that within the levy in the following year, so that we would be taxing again to collect that same amount. So, I think the state would be leaning on us fairly heavily to use our unexpended appropriation to resolve this rather than having to raise it a second time. And so, in terms of the bond rating, I don't think that the state would allow us to get to the point where there would be an impact. They would save us from ourselves, so to speak.
Can I ask a follow-on question? So, it's likely, so I understand it, if this article fails, it's likely that we would ask for a transfer from a budget surplus in other departments' budgets, underspending in other budgets, in other department budgets to cover this?
It is.
So, that we wouldn't get into the situation where we're looking at free cash? That's how I understood it.
It is a certainty that if this article doesn't pass at Town Meeting, that our next avenue to address it would be the year-end transfers, as the chair described earlier.
And the year-end transfers, if I just remember, last year, we had quite a bit of money available for those transfers. In other words, we had underspent our budget by quite a bit of money. I, I'm thinking.
Yes, we did, in the.
A lot, so there's, there's, at least last year, there was quite a bit of money available for that.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Carrie, when we talked about this at the Finance Meeting, we asked a question, are we accruing late fees on these expenditures at this point?
Not at this point, no.
Do you know when they would start?
You know, Town Council's been representing the community for a long time. They, they want to work with us to the greatest extent that they can, so we haven't really put a timetable on that. I think, or, you know, obviously, we have a few options to meet our obligations by the end of fiscal year, and we'll see how, we'll play, hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll meet our, we'll meet the obligation one way or the other.
Brooks Reed, three six six Esterbrook Road. I'd like to address Ms. Orton's question regarding, well, not the question, but the point you make about, what if the town can't pay its bill? And the lawyers for the town actually asked us if we would accept a stay, basically wait to continue the case until after this vote is taken, and our answer was a resounding no. And there's a very specific reason. The town has put out a large amount of false information about the trail, and I'll give you an example. If you go and you look at the June four, two thousand and eighteen Select Board meeting, and you watch the chair's report, the chair reads a three-minute statement about how people have placed poison on their land for the purpose of causing anxiety among dog walkers. And that video was snipped out and put into the Concord Unleashed webpage on July third, two thousand and eighteen. If you go to the Concord Unleashed webpage and you scroll down to July third, two thousand and eighteen, you can watch a little story about how Tom McKean says that we're putting out poison to cause anxiety among dog walkers. And of course, that got dog walkers very angry at us. And so, I made a public records request to find out how this had come about, and I got extensive emails between Tom McKean and Concord Unleashed, and both of them knew there was no poison in the woods. All this came about because my wife called the police to ask if it was permissible for us to put poison in our barn for rats. And that became a, a dog officer report that said, reporting party wants to put poison in our barn, and then Mr. McKean made up the story. It was placed on Concord Unleashed. People became very angry at us, and then they voted for the hundred thousand dollars at special Town Meeting. This is typical of the kind of tactics the town has used, and it's made our lives hell. And so, we are not going to take a stay. We're moving ahead as fast as we can on this. Thank you very much. By the way, you can check all that online, it's there, I checked it today.
Henry Dane, fifty-eight Everett Street. I'm not going to talk about the merits of the case, but I'm going to talk about the predictions about what may happen. No transfer of funds will take place from free cash without the consent of the Select Board and without the consent of the Finance Committee. Where we go on this is initially a matter of negotiation with our legal counsel. And certainly, we can negotiate with them about how we handle any fees or where we're going to go, and whether we're going to seek independent counsel of stature to review the case and advise us. So, it would be far better to leave this matter alone, and if there's going to be a transfer from any other account on any other occasion, to make that a matter of negotiation and discussion with our. discussion with our current counsel, and between the Select Board and the Finance Committee to come up with a appropriate resolution.
I see no one further at the mic. No more Finance Committee questions, I think you can move on to the town general fund budget.
Nice.
Keep going, keep going.
Would you like a stool?
Now you switch him over fast, and I look like Marco Rubio. Thanks, Chris. Actually, Stephen Crane, Town Manager. I'm here to present the Article, Article ten FY twenty-one budget. This is the motion that was provided by the Finance Department. Obviously, I'm not going to read that, but it's there for your review. I, I want to go, if I may, Mr. Chairman, off script for a second. If you were here for the preview meeting, or the Select Board, last Select Board hearing here, I think we heard a lot of feedback, literally, that the, the acoustics in here weren't very good, and the sound wasn't very good. I'm hoping people are noticing tonight that the acoustics are better and the sound is a lot better, and our, the team at Miniman Media Network spent a lot of time working on the sound system, and so we haven't heard, and I'm sure it'll happen now that I'm saying this out loud, but we haven't heard a squeak of feedback, or anywhere near the level of echoing, so I want to commend the, those folks for the work they did to make it so we can hear the presentations. I, thank you, Nick. So, click her here. Our, the fiscal year twenty-one proposed budget is in conformance of the guidelines. That guideline, of course, is a two and a half percent increase in the general fund appropriation. Few highlights, we have a new budget book. And the, the basic thing with the budget book is, the prior budget book, which was excellent, GFOA award-winning, and has tons of information, was based on a PowerPoint model of slides and graphics. The new budget book, which is based on a GFOA award-winning model somewhere in Western Mass, also has a lot of information, but it's based on a Word format, so it reads more like a narrative. So I'm hoping folks like the change, and I want to commend the Finance Department for really taking that challenge on, it was a really intense amount of work. So other highlights, we have consolidated budget lineups, we've taken basically thirty-nine and converted them into sixteen. At the end of the presentation, I'm going to run through that extremely quickly. We have a command and structure change in the Fire Department, I'll go through. Increased legal services budgets, we noted, and then there's two new positions, dispatcher for the, for the Police Department overnight, and a land manager for DPLM to help be, to help the town be a good steward of the, of the vast swath of conservation land that the town owns. Overall, though, I think, due to some attrition and some other moving around of some parts, there's a net decrease in FTEs funded by the general fund. And at the preview meeting, there was a comment, I got asked about increased, the growth in full-time, full-time employees, FTEs, full-time, sorry, full-time equivalents, FTEs. And so I, at the next SMT meeting, next department meeting, we went and asked about, you know, I asked the question, what has driven this growth, and where has it come from? And so what we discovered, and this is a general fund budget presentation, but for the purposes of the FTE analysis, I do co-mingle general fund and enterprise fund, because I think the concern about employee, is the number of employees, not how they're paid for. So since FY fifteen, we did a five-year look back, there has been fifty-two additional FTEs. CMLP, Fire, and IT are combined for about fifteen of that total, so that's more than 20% in just those three departments. And so the totals in FY twenty-one are two hundred forty-seven, two hundred forty-eight for the general fund, and a hundred and seventeen and a half for the enterprise and revolving funds. So it's, there's been a growth of about 14%. The additions, so why have, why have we added these positions? Some of them are easy, service expansion, going 24/7 in the West Concord Fire Station, the broadband service that was mentioned earlier. It was, it was a new enterprise since 2015. We also have increased demands for service, the library has, has a growing circulation, rate of circulation and visitation, and we also, because we have a, an aging population, there are a lot, there's a growth, a steady growth in EMS calls. We also have expanded roles, there have been a lot of new boards and committees that have been created that have required town administrative or professional support. And the, the town has also, has also assumed the operation of the, our public access television station, and we have a facilities division that manages our buildings, that is a relatively new department as well. And then finally, there are emerging needs that have been identified, for example, the municipal archivist is a new position that is helping the town really take care, take care of its records, working with the town clerk. We also have a tourism coordinator to help as a part of, as an economic vitality exercise, and we also have a sustainability coordinator. So the comment was made before about the population of the town versus the growth in employees, there really aren't, there really isn't a link there, it's, it's the types of services that the community expects and wants, and also areas of service that we, as the administrators, know are going to be things that need to be addressed. So that really kind of explains the growth, and I hope that helps. So amongst the recommendations in general government, we have, again, we, each department had its own building expense line item, we've taken those out of the individual department budgets and placed them in the facilities division budget. We also took a little bit off the top, because we think we're going to find some efficiencies that way with the budget. We also have, I don't need to mention legal services again, we are also elevating the tourism coordinator position that I believe was created last year in accordance with Envision Concord, making that more an economic vitality and tourism coordinator, so increasing the responsibilities of that position, and then also adding a part-timer at the visitor center to help offset the loss in time that, that coordinator will spend on economic vitality as opposed to tourism. So this has been, also switched, the retirement system employees, one of whom was just here a few moments ago, are now being paid by the retirement system as opposed to the town, and so there's a drop in that, those wages, but also a drop in the credit and transfer from, from the pension system. And then I added the, the land manager. The good thing with the land manager is it's a good value for a new full-time position that will play an important role, because funds are currently being allocated to have the tree preservation by law enforced by building inspectors. They're voluntarily giving up those duties, and those will go to the land manager, so there's a bit of an offset there, which is good news. Public safety, we talk about the command structure, basically, there's a shift on Walden Street, there's a shift on West Concord, and there's a captain that oversees both, and no other officers. So the plan is to elevate an existing firefighter on shift to a lieutenant, so the lieutenants will manage, will, will manage the calls, and the fire, and the captain will be the, the shift boss for all, for both shifts. So not an expansion of FTEs, but obviously lieutenant will, an existing firefighter will be promoted and will be more highly compensated. There's also a second dispatcher that is really important for overnight calls. I know that in the, in the world of dispatching, there are increased mandates from the state and federal government to have more than just one person on the desk at any one time. So we also have, this year, the general fund budget did have to absorb a loss of 124,000 from the Emergency Services Stabilization Fund, which I believe is from the Muse Project, that offset the cost. Four firefighters, the four new firefighters were hired a couple years ago to do the 24/7 coverage at West Concord. This, there's a, this is part of a planned decrease in that offset. So the general fund, by the end of the, by the end of the schedule, will have 100% of those wages. I do have the attrition savings in here, I'll comment on that in a little more detail later. The public works can be replaced with a fuel depot. On the flip side, there is going to be a decreased cost in the street lighting expenses because of upgrades of the fixtures. And then there is some attrition savings at the library as well, and we are making a market adjustment to our social workers, who were really, from a market standpoint, really well underpaid, and we talked earlier about how we, how HR does constant analysis and tests the market for those wages, and really, social workers who play such a vital role just weren't even close, so we're hopeful the timing will support that. The salary grid is the Salary Reserve Fund, we're budgeting 500,000 for that, that pays for collective bargaining agreements and other wage adjustments that get made during the year. So the attrition savings is over 350,000. Most of that, as you saw on the prior slide, was related to public safety, we've had a lot of retirements in both the Police and Fire Departments. When a firefighter or police officer who's senior retires from top step, you bring in a rookie who's obviously paid much less than the person who's walking out the door. Those savings, plus you also have a new town manager, a special collections curator, a lot of positions that have been, that have been filled at less than the, the prior occupant of that position. As people grow and advance through the salary scale, those attrition savings start, start to wash out, but they are in effect here for, for this year. We did increase the Fire Department's training budget and Police Department training budgets, because we do now have a younger workforce, so there was a little bit of an offset to the attrition there. So this is the summary of the transfer and the credits, which are monies that are revolving in enterprise funds, pay to the general fund to offset costs for service, that's time, HR's time, Finance Department's time, Town Manager's office time, spent on helping oversee those operations, and you can see that the enterprise funds are more than half of it, special revenue funds are about a quarter, about a third, and then, sorry, about a quarter, and then other smaller funds are about a quarter. I'm sure Carrie could speak to those in greater detail if needed. Here's a summary of the budget. The bottom line is overall, all in, including the schools, it's about a 3.04% increase from FY twenty. As you can see there, the general fund portion is about a 2.84%. There's a few expenditures in there that are not subject to the guideline, which is why that doesn't say two and a half. You can see the transfers listed there. So that'll bring us to, out of all that money, where does one dollar get allocated? As you can see, from the gray and the orange, a little more than half is allocated to jointly the Regional School District and Concord Public Schools. And then town government, the blue slice, is about 25% of the budget, followed by things like debt service and, and borrowing and benefits. So these next four slides, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. I mentioned the consolidation of line items, this gives to town government more flexibility in managing funds in the, in the fiscal year, and it also really more closely reflects how these departments and these funds are actually managed in real time in the organization. These four slides are really just a map to how we turn thirty-six, or thirty-nine into sixteen, and so if you find the presentation online, you can go and see, we didn't cut out a bunch of stuff, we just kind of reassigned it. So you, just looking at, the left column is FY twenty, that, the left column is the thirty-nine, the second one in is the sixteen, so as I go through, you'll see, there's only small in terms of removals, but people can, if people want to know going into the, into the town meeting where line items went, this can map it out for you. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee?
Oh. Talked into some...
Good job, yeah. So now we're going to hear from our Assistant Town Manager on the town's capital plan. Kate, why don't you take it away?
Thanks. Okay, good evening, I'm Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. Article eleven seeks authorization for an appropriation of funds related to capital expenditures. Capital expenditures are the use of funds to acquire or enhance productive assets that have a life expectancy of at least two years and cost at least $5,000. Assets procured with the intention of increasing service capacity and creating efficiencies are known as capital outlay projects. Outlay projects are supported within the levy limit, and are often referred to as cash capital or non-borrowing. The total proposed for capital outlay projects for fiscal year twenty-one is 1,787,195. If an item or project is over $100,000 with a life expectancy of at least five years, the town is able to utilize debt as a funding source, and those are considered the more traditional capital projects. The proposed borrowing-supported projects for fiscal year twenty-one total 5,250,000, which includes 4,350,000 in town projects and 900,000 for the Concord Public Schools. The highlighted yellow language in the motion this year is a bit different than those of years past. During the 2016 town meeting, $150,000 was included in the capital authorization plan to supplement a pre-scheduled fire truck replacement for fiscal year nineteen. That amount was included in the 2019 general obligation debt issue. Unfortunately, there was a fire in the West Concord Fire Station, and that truck was totaled in 2017, and subsequently replaced by the town's insurer. So because we had already issued this debt, there was no opportunity to rescind that authorization. Therefore, we'd like to transfer the amount, this $150,000, to offset this year's capital. Am I doing something wrong? What is... Thanks. This is another unreadable chart, which is the snapshot of the town's multi-year capital program, which details the projected larger-scale renovations or acquisitions between now and fiscal year twenty-five. Thanks. Here you can see specific fiscal year twenty-one capital projects, which will be funded through the capital outlay. The total for these projects, again, is 1,787,195,000, as seen in the motion. The borrowing projects for fiscal year twenty-one total 5,250,000. Projects recommended for funding, including those within the departments of, and divisions of recreation, parks and open space, facilities, natural resources, public works, Fire, and Concord Public Schools. Project number one relates to Emerson Playground, which means the physical structure located immediately adjacent to the Hunt Gym at Emerson Field. For years, Concord has been successful in maintaining compliance for its public playgrounds by using a mixture of woodchips and sawdust, commonly referred to as playground safety fiber. Emerson Playground pictured above is almost exclusively surfaced with this. In January of this year, the Architectural Access Board voted to establish new regulations for playground surfacing. The AAB has set a two-year trial period ending in January of 2021 for manufacturers to propose alternative accessible surface solutions. During the two-year period, the AAB said that they would accept the use of alternative materials, but only on a case-by-case basis, and also only if any of the materials have the same feel and provide equal or better access than the pour-in-place rubber. It was said that woodchips, sand, and fiber, and other shovel, shovel-able surfaces would not be accepted, and so the amount sought, $200,000, is for the removal of the old fiber woodchips and the installation of a pour-in-place subsurface covering 8,600 square feet. If properly maintained, it would last for about 12 to 15 years. Project two relates to the ongoing development of Giraud Park, purchased for 2.7 million in July of 2018. Since that time, there has been a number of public hearings, site visits, and brainstorming sessions, where the overwhelming majority of community members expressed a desire for sustainable plantings and development, open space preservation, and quiet passive recreational opportunities. Refinement of the plan over the past several months took many things into consideration, including the site limitations, natural resources and zoning regulations, and community feedback. Effective last month, master planning and the investigatory process had been completed, and in April, the development plan will be reviewed by the Natural Resources Commission. Providing that the plan is acceptable, we plan to bid the Parkland Project on or before May first for a summer and fall construction bid. The blue portions here in the picture relate to this year's CPC request for $500,000, which would be heard at a separate meeting. It will be used to supplement funds needed for a composting toilet facility and accessible pathways to and from that. The orange and red sections are included in Phase One, and they propose a new entrance driveway off Commonwealth Ave, allowing the previous driveway to now become part of the new affordable housing lot, and three large-scale stormwater bioretention areas, one with a sizable, sustainable garden, bridge, and a reflection area for passive recreational use. The remainder of this phase relates to invasive species mitigation, slope restoration, and erosion control to help with pond health. The green areas of this part are part of a... The green areas of this part are part of a potential Phase 2 and would include proposals for a fishing pier, gathering areas, kayak launches, and additional blaze nature trails on the western side of the property. This table depicts the monetary breakdown for the Giraud project as of March 1st. The total necessary to complete Phase 1 is about $1.75 million. Funding from last year's capital plan and CPC allocation will be combined with this year's request from both capital and CPC to create a balance of about $1.8 million. Project three relates to the Rideout Park in West Concord. As West Concord's largest active recreational site, more than 50,000 visitors use the park amenities listed above. The capital request of $195,000 is being sought for the facilities department to spearhead the renovation of the park bathroom facility. Last renovated in the mid-'80s, the facility is woefully inadequate for the volume of use and lack of sustainable features, which the recreation director and facilities director want. They want low-flow toilets, automatic faucets, and automatic shut-off lights. Project number four seeks $500,000 for dredging two areas in Warner's Pond. This is a natural resources, multi-year project, with funding proposed within the town's capital plan for this year and fiscal '22. The total amount needed for the dredging of these two areas within the red circles above equates to about $2 million. It's important to note that regardless of whether swimming is pursued in or around Warner's Pond, the strategic dredging, if not completed, would hinder boating and other types of passive recreational activities. If anyone was out there during the spring and early summer months, some of the area near the Boy Scouts' island was almost impassable. Project five relates to accessibility improvements in stormwater management for the White Pond Beach area. Current access to the beach is achieved via a set of stairs which vary in size, rise, and depth, traversing an approximate 50-foot descent. A comprehensive master plan for the facility relative to access and accessibility began about a year ago. At the time, we had thought the highest need for the property was a restroom, in addition to the accessibility. Having just completed the first year of the swim season, which was managed by facilities in the recreation department, it was clear that stormwater management and extreme runoff into the pond must be the town's focus in order to maintain this new asset and ensure overall better pond health. The development of a slope restoration program, which works to incorporate both underground stormwater catch basins and above-level treatment areas with sustainable plantings, will help erosion. Hillside detention ponds will be added to trap runoff before it reaches the pond's edge. Our hope is that this will aid in eliminating pollutions and the washout. The next project relates to the fire apparatus. Ladder one is a 2011 Emergency One 110-foot aerial ladder truck. $250,000 will be used to refurbish ladder one, which is approaching its ninth year of service. This scheduled maintenance is required to sustain the 20-year use expectancy of the apparatus. Systems to refurbish are listed on the left-hand side of this slide. Similarly, $275,000 is sought to replace the 2011 E1 ambulance, which is entering its ninth year of service. To maintain high-quality ambulances, the fire department replaces these vehicles every nine years. They have the ambulances in the front line of service for six years and then in reserve for the remainder of the three. This ambulance is currently operating as a reserve, covering for when others are out of service or in for maintenance, and also serves as a backup when temporary staffing and an additional ambulance is necessary. The next is for Concord Public Works, who seeks $1.73 million for the roads program that continues to address the need to bring up the average pavement condition index of the town's 107-mile street network. The roads to be rehabilitated with the $1.73 will be combined with $670,000 of Chapter 90 state funds. And the roads to repair will include Peter Spring Road and Prescott Road neighborhoods, the Butternut Circle in Minot Road neighborhood, and Hubbard Street. The program will coordinate with water and other utilities to address their needs as well. Those are the capital projects for fiscal year '21, and the town would appreciate affirmative action.
Questions from the committee?
Just one question. Did you say that part of this is capital plan for the schools?
Yeah.
And how much is that?
$900,000. And my understanding is that's included in their presentation, specific to what they're going to be using that for.
I have a few questions. First of all, I understand that there's a lot on your plate, so I appreciate all the work that you've done. I would just like to get a better idea for how much we're asking for each of these projects this year, and how much is going to be accomplished with that money? Because we've got a lot of money that's already been appropriated, we've got projects that are going to expand several years. So, for example, we can just start with Emerson Park, for example. So for Emerson Park, this particular article is asking for $200,000?
195.
195, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, 200. Yep, I'm sorry, Rideout is 195, yes.
So Emerson is asking for 200, and that's to do something at the actual playground, if I understood you correctly, right?
Correct.
What about the 500,000 that's already been approved in the last two years? Has that been spent, or is that...
Is this for Emerson Field?
That's the field.
Yes, that has not been spent, but Aaron McClosco, he's here today, and he is actually spearheading that. That's for the field, not the playground.
Got it, good. Okay, thank you. That clarifies that for me, thanks. Okay, let's go to Giraud for a minute, okay? So now, this year, this article, this $5 million that we're asking for includes 600,000 for Giraud.
That's correct.
And so that's in addition to, I think, a total of about 3.8 that we've already allocated to that?
We purchased the property for...
Exactly.
Correct, yep.
Well, we purchased it for 2.5, and then we've got 200 from CPC, and there's a lot of numbers floating around here.
We purchased it for 2.7.
2.7, thank you. And so then, this year, we're asking for another 600,000, plus I think CPC is asking for a half a million.
Correct.
So is that money going to be added to the money that's already allocated, or what?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and what are we going to get for that again, at Giraud?
With any luck, we will be getting a new driveway over and a parking area. See if I can get to the... So basically, everything you see here, with the exception of some of the modifications that we have here in sort of the green areas, but we'll get all the stormwater management, the bioretention areas, an open field, accessible walking paths that are paved throughout, blazed nature trails with woodchips throughout the woodland area on the left-hand side. We'll get a slope that comes down so that there can be access to a small cove area where you could launch canoes or kayaks. Could be, in a future phase, the site of a boat dock or some kind of launching system. You'll get parking. We're going to have a composting toilet facility with two different restroom areas. We're toying between either having male or female or unisex with changing tables there, a large, kind of barn-style event pavilion that is going to be set in the back, that's sort of a tongue-and-groove log cabin style. Sustainable plantings, lots of native plantings to separate the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail sort of from this, and then all of the connections that you see, either all the way on the right-hand side to the parking, and then up the top, which are the bike connections to the rail trail.
Okay, so that's all for... Is there going to be further money required for Giraud? Or did everything you just described, is that going to be covered with this 600,000 and the 500 from CPC?
Everything I described is covered. Anything that we would want to do, or the community would want to do in the future, we would have to come back. But we'd like to finish Phase 1 and live with it for a while.
Right, good.
So that's Phase 1. So Phase 1, if I look at the acquisition cost plus Phase 1, so we will be spending around 4.7 million, is that right?
Yep, we were averaging 5, because we're trying to plan for contingency, but we have...
Around 5 million for Phase 1. Is there a plan for Phase 2?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay, and then my last question is White Pond, right?
Yes.
So you're asking for 600,000 for White Pond, right?
Correct.
And that's in addition to the 850 that we've already gotten from CPC and last year's capital article, right?
We did not receive 850,000 for...
Well, last year, I think you got 250 from CPC and then 600,000 from the town.
Oh, right, but you said 800, yes.
850, so that adds up to 850.
Correct.
And then another 600 this year.
Correct.
So that's 1.4 million, right? Okay, so, and again, what do we get for the 1.4?
So we're not as far along in the White Pond project as far as costing it out, so I just want to be clear that what we have are based on the initial estimates from our master planning, but we haven't gone to the full cost analysis. My understanding is that regardless of whether we have, you know, the 1.4 or something around there, we're going to have a little bit of repointing of the parking lot to have some other parking areas that are up there. And if you've driven in and out, it's pretty difficult to get two cars going down in the same way, so we're going to have some one-way traffic. The pathway that's going down the middle is an accessible pathway with a set of stairs, new stairs that are regulated in the center. There'll also be a restoration to the boat-launch access drive that comes down and a small landing area that would have stormwater retention underneath it. We're also going to do a bunch of, which you can't see from here, slope restoration, so it's quite a steady pitch that goes down. And so we're going to try to use the areas that are around the new pathways that come down to have some bioretention areas to try to catch the water before it comes running down and goes into the pond. Right now, when it's a heavy rain, everything that is, all the rain and everything that it brings with it ends up basically on the beach. And so we're trying to mitigate that.
Okay, I lied, I have one more question. When you're talking about things like a pavilion or whatever, I forget what you called it at Giraud, right? What's the process that we use to make sure that that is, in fact, what people want on that property?
Sure, well, we had, in the instance of Giraud, five public hearings, and we had... Two of those public hearings were actually onsite, where we walked the property with interested citizens, and we did a couple of online forums where we did a Facebook Live that was there and tried to gather feedback from that. We also did a town-wide survey where we had 3,200 responses to that, to try to figure out what people wanted. So I'm fairly confident in our ability as the town to say that we really are representing what we've heard from the people who have answered our questions about what they'd like to have.
That's funny, I didn't get that. I don't remember getting that survey, but anyway, that would be, it would be really good if... I guess I should pay better attention to giving feedback. Thank you.
Dean?
Yes.
I just have a couple, one suggestion. I think your presentation is really spot-on, you're giving people the visuals and all that, but that's not my comment. Oh, that's, that's all right, in the noise. My comment would be, there's in the budget book, pages 48 and 49, talk about the capital outlay, which will help people understand a five-year timeframe, because this is a five-year timeframe on those two pages for the capital outlay, as well as the debt on page 51. And I think it might be helpful during your presentation, because the budget book will be available for people at town meeting as well, if they haven't brought their own. And you might be able to reference those pages if people want to follow along, because there may be some questions along Mary's line of questioning about, well, what about the future, you know, and how is money going to be spent in the next two to five years? And so that would be one suggestion. My other would be, and I understand you've been having all these hearings and on and on, but when we talk, when we talk to people about how much money is being spent on a project, and we're looking further out, up to five years, and they'll see $400,000 in FY '24, they may want to know what is going on at that point in time. So it's just more of a heads-up.
Okay.
But also, if you, sometime in the next 12 months, if you want to talk to people about different projects, as you have been doing in the past, I think it would be good to help them to better understand what's happening when, so that they have an understanding too, of when the needs are going to be coming up.
So we're going to be getting, we're going to be beginning the same process that we followed effectively for Giraud, for White Pond, very soon. So we'll make sure that you get those emails, and...
Thank you.
Because that's basically how we're able to narrow down the scope, and then we'll go and say, everything that we just said costs X. What's the highest and most important thing?
Thank you.
I have a few nuts and bolts questions. If we could go to the slide for Public Works Roads Program, just back for one second.
Oops, sorry.
Go back. I don't think any of the streets that are being addressed this year are arterial, so I'm not going to press hard on the complete streets, you know, initiatives, which are generally useful for arterial roads where you have multi-use and we need to redevelop the streets themselves. So that's not my question. My question is, is our sidewalk improvements part of this article?
No, this is roads and parking lots, but there is a sidewalk... Oh, Alan, would you like to come up? I was trying. Chris, can you go back to, I don't know what just happened?
Sorry.
Well, because there's some in cap...
It's part of like a complete street.
It's part of capital outlay.
Steve, I'm Steve Dukran, town engineer. The roads program addresses pretty much the pavement rehabilitation. We do have a sidewalks budget that will address essentially any sidewalk needs, like repairs and replacements, ADA ramps and so on. So we tapped into that budget when we do the roads program.
Do you publish an annual list of sidewalks that you're either going to resurface, improve, or add to the community? Is that something that you plan out through the budgeting process? Is there anything you can say to that question?
Actually, we have some that we have targeted for this year. Lawsbroke Road, Sudbury Road, from Thoreau to Main, and Hubbard Street. Those are the priorities for any sidewalk extensions or replacement. But on the streets that we are paving, we saw the list before, if we have any handicap ramps that have needs, we will address those needs.
Thank you. The reason I ask this question is, it'll be the first time I think I've done this in a public hearing, but I've done it in finance committee question and answer periods during our meetings. The sidewalk that does not exist is the one that goes down Thoreau Street or down Walden Street to Walden Pond. It is a very dangerous thing. In the summertime, people, two and three abreast, with picnic coolers, beach chairs, it is extremely dangerous. And if you can get it on your sidewalk improvement or addition list, it is a critical place where people that are, they're not community members generally, they might stop at the depot, get off the train, and walk down. Or they park at the high school and walk down. There's no sidewalk. We need to get it on the agenda at some point.
And I do have a response to that, too. Yeah, I'm relatively new to the town, so in my research as to what's been happening, I have seen where there was a plan for future years for addressing that particular sidewalk.
So there's a plan in future years. Do you have a year? Okay, I'm going to, I'll drop it. But I just want to, I just want to somehow get it out in the public space.
I'm sorry, can I just, I also just wanted to mention that the first couple of slides for this was the non-borrowing. And so there are requests here in the non-borrowing articles that kind of go to all of the different buckets of public works, including engineering, highway, road, park entry, equipment, drainage, and sidewalk.
And sidewalks, thank you.
Dean, I have some questions, too, when you have a minute.
Can I go to my second one, and then I'll get to you, Chris? Could you go to slide 11, please?
Well, you know what? These aren't numbered. Do we know which one's 11?
On the bottom.
Oh, 11, there it is.
There it was. There you go. Okay, so here we are at the funding plan for finally getting to dredging Warner's Pond. This has been going on since 2011. All of the activity to date has been managed by the Department of Natural Resources, and this is in parks and playgrounds in the budget. Why is the Department of Natural Resources, who has been managing this project from 2011, not managing the dredging?
They are managing the dredging.
Well, it's not in their budget.
Well, it's park and playground budget is... Well, it's, park and playground budget is new, and it was dealing with capital projects for either open space or large park areas. And so we're hoping that Delia and our finance director and our recreation director are all going to work together, much like Delia's involvement with the White Pond projects. And so where it is, as far as monetarily, doesn't necessarily dictate who's overseeing it. This is a natural resources project, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm a former member of the Natural Resources Commission, so the Natural Resources Commission and the oversight of any embankments or any kind of work anywhere near a wetland or a waterway are obviously engaging with the Natural Resources Department.
You're not getting any fight from us. I agree with you. It's a natural resources project.
All right, very good, thank you. Chris?
Okay, thanks. I'm going to stick with this one, just to make sure I understand it. So Warner's Pond dredging on the chart that showed the multi-year added up to about 2 million, is that, is that a good estimate for the whole thing? Is that like phase one in Juroe, or are we still figuring out what it's going to cost?
When you say the whole thing, you mean just the areas in the red or the whole pond?
So, so like Juroe, you had a plan for what am I going to do with this thing? For White Pond, pardon me, for Warner's Pond, is there a plan?
Yes.
And do we know what the total plan is, what it's going to cost? I assume that includes dredging, but there may be more. So I'm trying to get a bigger picture on that property.
Sure. So much like what Mr. Banfield said before, there was a bunch of studies and things that were done for many, many years prior to this. And so what you're seeing is basically what all of those studies had told us. It will be somewhere between 2 and 2.5 million for these two particular areas. We don't believe that enough has changed since ESS did their dredging feasibility study to now. Usually these things take, you know, a decade to, you know, 15 years to really change. So if this were to be approved, it's a very, very good estimate barring any unforeseen circumstances, that this is what it's going to cost. The one caveat with that is that we have to dredge the material up, take it, and then we are going to be using or proposing to use some of the state land at the farm near the minimum security prison to be able to de-water it. And not having to truck that out of town is what is really going to save quite a bit of money. And so if something were to change in that aspect, and we don't anticipate that it will, but the state moves at a pace that isn't necessarily the same as ours.
Okay. Okay, so if it's dredged, so when we finish dredging, is there going to be a phase two? Or are we thinking we can use the property once it's dredged?
You'll be able to use the property. You'll see a considerable difference. You know, the pond health as it is will last a long time. I can tell you, one of the problems with this property is that the output from Route 2 runs underneath and right into the Juroe area, and that is pretty much where we're seeing, you know, the greatest sediment that's lasting right there. When the Mass DOT finally decides to kick off the Route 2 renovation project, we've already put a plug in and had an unofficial okay that they're going to take up that pipe, decommission it, and have a bio-retention area where the farm is on the other side, where the horse barn is for the state police. That will start to alleviate a lot of the problem on the other end. Then we have to make a community decision whether people want to swim at Warner's Pond or not. If they do, we would need an additional dredging of that area that's been, you know, polluted from the Route 2 runoff for years. But we're talking years.
Okay. All right, so, and my last one. So on the White Pond, similar question. So it looks like on a multi-year schedule, it's like 1.6 million on that property. Is that part of, have you got a phase one plan for that? Or is that sort of, you said you were kind of surprised about stormwater, you wanted to do access. So are we still really figuring out what we need to do there?
I think that, what we need to do in the initial period is here. We're getting a lot of mixed reviews, whether the portable toilet facility is adequate enough, or whether people want a permanent toilet facility. Right now, we've decided that we're backburnering that in lieu of doing the stormwater management. So there's potential that we might come back if the community really has that as a desire and propose other things. I can tell you that just these improvements alone would make the health of the pond and the accessibility great. And so if this is all that the community really wants to do for a while, I mean, that's fine. We're not really envisioning anything else except for getting these initial problems set. But there's lots of things that people have said. Someone proposed a ban shell there. I mean, there's a lot of things that people want to see that we're not prepared to cost out yet.
Okay, thank you. One last question. So you mentioned in the survey process or in the hearing process that when people give you the wish list, which everybody has a long wish list until they say, what's it going to cost me? How are those two things married in these hearings? Do you give them a cost?
Yes. Well, we haven't done that for White Pond yet, but for Juroe, what we did is we got the wish list. And anything that was a reoccurring wish, so there's lots of things that people put in that one or two, but if we get a percentage, you know, 5% or more of the respondents that have a certain thing that's a wish, we try to cost that out. And what we did for the second hearing is come back and say, these were the top 15 items that people wanted, and this is what it costs. And actually, one of them was a playground. And so one of the things we said is, you know, that's about $200,000. And so immediately, it was, well, we'd rather have a bathroom facility there than a playground. And then that determination was made.
Okay, thank you.
So since you have the White Pond slide up, are you happy enough with the bathroom facility that you've brought in? Is that, you know, because it's not on this list, and you're saying, you know, after we do this, we're pretty happy?
I think it's funny, because we constantly talk about bathrooms. Every time I'm up here, it has been four years of talking about bathrooms in various places around town.
That's okay, CCHS will have their opportunity as well.
So I, I am going to defer probably to Ryan Kane on that one, because he would be the one that was hearing either this is the best bathroom I've ever been in or the opposite. And so I'd like for him to answer that question, if I could.
Ryan Kane, Director of Recreation. Overall, I would say the bathroom facility was very functionable and manageable, and people were happy with it. And the use of White Pond was not the overbearing rush of people that some people in public hearings had anticipated. It was pretty consistent with what had happened at White Pond previously. So that bathroom facility can manage what is happening with our current attendance. The only fears would be if attendance grew, would it be able to sustain and hold under that pressure?
Thank you.
So we were happy, thank you.
Okay, Matt Johnson, 21 Winter Street. I guess each of the projects has had their own public feedback process, but then kind of stepping back and looking at all the projects that are being put forward this year, they all have this, I mean, not all, there's ambulances and stuff, but most of them seem to have a similar kind of recreational profile to them. And it seems like a whole lot to be doing in a single year, if you look at the totality of it. I mean, is there any way to kind of time-phase this and as well, time-phase the cost? Because it just seems like we're going to radically change the recreational profile of Concord, it looks like, in just a year or two. And it's also interesting, even looking at this picture, if you don't have very good vision and you saw the recent Walden Pond, you know, proposal that the state is doing, they're also taking a pond and they're adding new bath facilities and overlooks and, you know, all kinds of amenities that now will have one, two, three ponds that all are having all of these addition, additional recreational facilities, you know, fresh recreational facilities added. And so it just seems strange to me that we'd be doing all of this all at once, rather than time-phasing it.
So understood, and we like to make sure that there isn't a moment in the day that we are affording any sleep or eating. So we just make sure we're constantly doing work. But, but what I can say is that the project managers for most of these are very different. The project manager for, you know, the dredging project is Natural Resources, and with the White Pond and Juroe recreational phasing, it was not ideal, but the White Pond was gifted to us. And, you know, we weren't in a position that we wanted to turn down that gift. And so it sort of, just by circumstance, sort of rose to the level where we said, you know, let's take that on. And so what we've done is essentially spaced them out about seven months from one another. That's in a perfect world. I think realistically, we're probably looking at eight to 10 months, and that's if we have a winter like this one. And so what we were hoping to do is Juroe Phase 1 would be nearly complete by the end of this year, so in December, November, December, except for a punch list in the springtime. And that we would have the bio-retention in by the time the first snow falls, so that we are mitigating the stormwater runoff, but we wouldn't have the pathway and any of that done until the following spring. And so we have thought of that, and we have phased that enough that it's manageable. The other thing is that the team that is doing these two larger projects, it consists of myself, the recreation director, and the facilities director. And so you have, you know, three people who are managing these projects in different aspects. And I, you know, I think that it's exciting and we want to do it, so.
And then, just having in the past hauled all kinds of gear, as well as even children up and down the existing steps, I understand that they could be improved. But the, I thought that putting the disabled parking, handicap parking down near the pond itself would have averted the need to create such an elaborate and expensive ADA path from the main parking lot. Is it not the case?
It can be the case. We didn't do it just based on ADA. The recreational standard is called universal design, and that's for people with mobility issues, either temporary or permanent. And that includes toddlers, that includes people that have a broken ankle, that includes parents. I myself have hauled stuff, usually in a wagon, and going downstairs with a wagon that traverses 50 feet down is a problem. And so this was the way that we could make sure that everybody is able to access, whether they are, you know, in a wheelchair or have a walker or not, whether they have a stroller or anything else. When talking to people about what we need to do, access was the number one thing that we heard. And it was difficult, and for the most part, it's young families and younger children that are there most of the time during the day, and it's very difficult for them to traverse up and down, and they wouldn't be able to have a space down below to park. And it wouldn't really be feasible for a parent to drop the children off and then go up and park and come down. You can't leave them alone.
That's funny, we used to do it all the time.
Well, we don't want to encourage that.
Are there any further questions on this article? Thank you, Kate. Now we're going to move on to Article 12, the authorization of expenditure of revolving funds under Mass MGL 44.
This is another article that sometimes appears on the consent calendar, and the request here, as the chair mentioned, is to establish annual budgets for four revolving funds. Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53, E and a half, requires that annual spending limits be set by town meeting for certain revolving funds. Revolving funds authorized under other sections of Mass General Law, such as the Recreation Revolving Fund, do not require annual appropriation. This article seeks to establish annual spending limits for the following four revolving funds: Regional Housing Services at $275,000, Road Repair at $120,000, Senior Services at $50,000, and Tree Preservation at $100,000. Fund receipts to these revolving funds come in the form of fees, fines, and/or donations. Spending goes to supplement existing departmental programs and services, including pavement preservation activities, day trips, and other recreational activities for seniors, and services performed through the Regional Housing Service Office, such as consulting on proposed housing projects, reconciliation of the subsidized housing inventory, and other monitoring or existing affordable housing units. So again, this seeks to establish annual budget or annual spending limits for these four revolving funds.
My XXX.
I should have put person instead of, I meant to put person. So sorry, no slight intended there.
All righty, thank you. We have Lyndon Escobedo to introduce this next article.
Thank you, Mr. Banfield. Purpose of Article 14 is to appropriate funds for affordable housing development. And I'm going to read this for the audience. To determine whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash the sum of $500,000 for the purpose of developing or supporting affordable housing within the town to be extended under the direction of the town manager on such terms and conditions as the select board may determine, including transferring funds to the municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or take any other action relative thereto. At last year's town meeting, four articles, as you will recall, were approved to support affordable housing. This was introduced as a multi-year strategy to allocate funds for affordable housing, and two articles passed as home rule petitions that are currently before the state legislature for approval. One was a real estate transfer fee surcharge, and the other was a building permit surcharge. If passed, both of those will come back to a future town meeting for approval. Also at last year's town meeting, two other articles passed. One was an appropriation for free cash and the acceptance of the state statute to develop a municipal affordable housing trust fund, both of which anticipated further action at this year's 2020 town meeting, and were included in the select board's goals for FY '20. The Affordable Housing Funding Report recommended additional free cash appropriations. They anticipated this year's request of $500,000 for affordable housing because they understood that it would take at least two years for the home rule petitions to go through the state legislature. At tonight's select board meeting, we had an update on the status of those two articles. And slide four. With this appropriation, we hope to be able to capitalize on affordable housing opportunities as they're realized. We hope to continue to build a dedicated affordable housing fund that will provide initial funding for the municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund with select board approval. And this will allow the town to act quickly for opportunities as they arise, just as we already have done with last year's appropriation. We've already spent $210,000 of that appropriation when an opportunity arise for an affordable home at 930 Main Street. It also provided some development costs for the Juroe Affordable Housing effort that was approved at last year's town meeting. So the ability to have a fund that we can tap when opportunities arise is extremely important to reaching our town goals for affordable housing. And next slide. Are there any questions or comments? I'm happy to take them.
Any questions from the committee?
Thank you.
The last two on our agenda tonight usually are sort of snooze-fests, but tonight we have one called unpaid bills. It's already come up, so maybe Carrie can enlighten us on the next two. Thank you.
So on unpaid bills, there is actually no action required or no motion anticipated. And if I could just advance myself to 52. Article 52 is a debt rescission article, and again, no motion or action anticipated.
So when we don't pay our legal bills, there may be motions. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Banfield?
Yes? Yes, Mike.
Mike Lawson, 1695 Lower Road, Chairman of the Select Board. I've been asked in consultation with the moderator to make sort of a public service announcement. And that is that she has consulted with Health, Board of Health, and with the Chair of the Select Board. And the decision she has made is that we are not going to use electronic clickers at town meeting this fall. And in addition, she has developed a protocol for the town to use in trying to determine whether or not we would go forward with town meeting in the event that the virus gets out of control. I will post that protocol, have that protocol posted on the town website tomorrow. And at the next select board meeting on the 23rd of March, we will discuss that. So I wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Say what? Yes, and there is a coronavirus website on the town website with updates from CDC and Department of Public Health.
Thank you. Did I get a motion to adjourn here?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All stand over. Thank you very much.